Welcome, ACPS families. Thank you for joining us. In order for all of our families...
Daniela?
Yes?
Sorry, it looked like we were still in practice session.
Oh.
We're good.
Okay. Welcome, ACPS families. Thank you for joining us. In order for all of our families to be able to access this presentation in their preferred language, we are providing simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Amharic, and Arabic today. After all the interpreters have provided the instructions, a globe icon will appear at the bottom of your computer screen. Please click the globe icon and then select your preferred language. If you are watching on the phone, press the three dots on the bottom of your right screen and then select your preferred language. We will begin with our Spanish interpreter, followed by Amharic, and we apologize, the Arab interpreter, we are still waiting. So as the interpretation is available, you will see that option in the globe. So can we start with the Spanish interpreter, please?
Absolutely. Bienvenidos a las Escuelas Públicas de Alexandria. Muchas gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Nosotros estamos ofreciendo traducción simultánea en español, amharic, y árabe. Y si necesitan utilizar el servicio de interpretación, por favor, en un momento va a estar disponible un globo que está en la parte de abajo de la pantalla, un globito, y clickean el globo y se hace disponible en la parte del menú español, si quieren español, amarico, si quieren amarico, y árabe, si quieren árabe. Y entonces cuando seleccionen eso van a tener disponible la traducción en el idioma que ustedes necesitan. Muchas gracias.
En cuanto a la matatxo, ya Alexandria, ya es una de las veces que voy a ver. Y en la que te he dado, en cuanto a la matatxo, me he dado. Aquí, o de, me he tenido una cama, que te he dicho, 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 que te he dicho.
At this time, Dr. Crawford will now introduce our panelists in today's session.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Welcome and thank you for joining our COVID-19 Town Hall with the Alexandria Health Department. I am Julie Crawford. I am the Chief of Student Services and Equity for Alexandria City Public Schools. Very excited to share with you our Alexandria Health Department's school team. This school team is exceptional and they respond to every question, concern, anything that we have throughout the week, the evenings, and the weekends when we have COVID questions and cases that come up. I want to share with you that we've received a number of questions in advance of our town hall this evening. We also had a town hall yesterday. We've tried to embed a number of those questions into the presentation, but we will do a review at the end of the Health Department's presentation and we should also have time for a question and answer session before we close at 6:30. Please feel free to use the QA button at the bottom of your screen as we go through the presentation. Again, thank you so much for your time this evening and joining us and I will turn it over to the Health Department School Team to present their information.
Thank you so much, Dr. Crawford. My name is Emily Astorka. I'm a public health nurse with the Alexandria Health Department and part of our school team. Thank you again, ACPS families, for spending some of your evening with us today. I'd like to start with the next slide and introduce our COVID Response Team. Thank you. So the Alexandria Health Department, or AHD, School Response Team, provides guidance and serves as a resource to schools, daycares, and families in the community. Our team members are listed here and consist of AHD epidemiologists, public health nurses, and other public health professionals that have experience in COVID-19 case investigations and contact tracing. I'll now hand it over to one of my colleagues who'll go over our agenda and goals for today.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lena Zimmerman and I'm an epidemiologist at Alexandria Health Department, as well as a member of the COVID-19 School Response Team. Today, we're going to start by reviewing some of Alexandria Health Department's goals and key definitions that we use when we're working with our schools, cases, and close contacts. Next, we'll discuss how ACPS and Alexandria Health Department communicate and collaborate to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our schools and in our community. We'll also review what to expect from Alexandria Health Department when a case is identified at ACPS. We'll briefly review the updated CDC and VDH guidance for K-12 schools, including updated guidance on physical distancing as well as ventilation. We'll provide a brief update on Alexandria Health Department's vaccination efforts and we'll conclude with some questions, most of which were received in advance. We'll also be able to take a few from the chat as well. Next slide, please. So to begin, I just want to share some of the goals of Alexandria Health Department. Our goal is to identify cases and close contacts and to ensure that cases and close contacts have all the information they need to keep themselves and their families safe and healthy. We also connect families to resources, which could include food assistance, rental assistance, our isolation and quarantine hotel, and we provide tips to families to prevent the spread of COVID-19 within their household. Next slide, please. One of my coworkers is now going to share some key definitions with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Hi, my name is Anne Namavero and I'm a case investigator with Alexandria Health Department and part of the school team. As a case investigator, I'm both a case investigator and a contact tracer, so I understand these definitions very, I use these definitions on a daily basis. A case is someone who has tested positive for COVID-19 and they either have a positive laboratory test or they are what we call a probable case and this is a person with symptoms of COVID-19 and unknown exposure. A case can have, can either have symptoms of COVID-19 or be without symptoms, but they are both infectious and need to isolate to slow the spread of COVID-19. We will talk about isolation shortly. From a case, we identify contacts. A close contact is someone who has been identified to have been within six feet of a COVID-19 case for a cumulative length of 15 minutes or more, without protective equipment while the case was infectious. While you may not know that somebody is infectious, we normally, as case investigators, track a case's activities 48 hours prior to symptom onset to identify those close contacts. And we don't come to this decision lightly. We must make sure that they meet the definition that has been set by CDC and that by the time we're asking someone to actually quarantine, we know that they have met that definition of close contacts. Next slide, please.
Anne, could I interject? I'm so sorry to interrupt. We do simultaneous translation, so one of the translators just asked if we could slow down just a little bit so they are able to cover the information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So with or without symptoms, the investigator will ask a case to isolate and this is the practice, isolation is the practice of keeping someone with COVID-19 away from others to slow the spread of COVID-19. The recommendation is for at least 10 days since the symptom onset or until the symptoms significantly improve and there is no need for medication to reduce fever or any other symptom. Now, I understand that this might be a challenge with children, but we ask that you practice some other measures like wearing masks in the home, having a sick room separate for the person with COVID-19, separate bathrooms, if you may, and if you can't separate the bathrooms, disinfect those bathrooms after every use to keep the other family members and the pets away from the person who has COVID-19. This will help in reducing the spread of COVID-19 and the viral load in the home. And... Could you go to the next slide, please? On the quarantine, and when it comes to quarantine, this is the practice of keeping a close contact away from others during the incubation period of COVID-19. The best practice is to keep your children home for 14 days because that's the incubation period for COVID-19 since their last contact from the case. And this information will be provided by the contact tracer or case investigator you speak to during your conversation about this close contact, during your phone discussion about when we have identified your child or your loved one as a case, as a close contact. So make sure that every day you are assessing symptoms of COVID-19 like fever, cough, loss of taste and smell, congestion, chest pain, abdominal pain, running nose, muscle legs, diarrhea, fatigue, chills, sweats, shortness of breath, and sore throat. And please make sure that you're staying away from other people who are at a high risk of getting sick with COVID-19, like those with pre-existing conditions or older people. With congregate settings, we advise that the child stays home for 14 days because that's the current incubation period. The next slide is for my colleague Lauren to give us the next part of it.
Thanks, Anne. Hi, everyone. My name's Lauren. I'm a public health nurse with the Alexandria Health Department and I'm part of the Health Department School Team. So I'm going to talk a little bit about how the Health Department and the schools work together. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. Thanks. So our main goal is to work together with ACPS to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our community. Alexandria Health Department provides recommendations to ACPS that come from the Virginia Health Department and from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The Virginia Department of Education also provides guidance to schools. Next slide, please. Whenever a person who has COVID-19 has been onsite at an ACPS facility, we work in collaboration with ACPS. So I'm going to walk you through this flow chart that talks about what happens in this process. First, we identify a person with COVID-19. This can either happen, ACPS might identify it first, or the Health Department might identify it. Once we learn this person has been physically onsite at an ACPS location, ACPS will pause the affected classroom or the area the person was in to allow time for contact tracing and for cleaning. The Health Department interviews the person who has COVID-19 or their parent or guardian if they're a minor. And at the same time, the Health Department will provide guidance to ACPS on contact tracing within the school. Under guidance from the Health Department, ACPS identifies close contacts of the person who has COVID-19. ACPS will then provide the Health Department with the contacts' information and it will get passed along to the school team. At this time, ACPS may also send notification letters to affected families. The Health Department will use the contact information provided by ACPS to reach out to the close contacts. We will ask close contacts if they're having any symptoms, provide information on quarantine, information on testing. We can provide links to necessary resources and we can offer to enroll contacts in a symptom monitoring system called SARA Alert. And we'll go into a little more detail about what to expect when you get this phone call a little later in the presentation. After all of the initially identified close contacts have been reached, ACPS will continue to notify the Health Department if it learns of any new COVID-19 cases. At the end of the quarantine period, which is referred to as the monitoring period in this slide, the Health Department checks in with ACPS to confirm that no further COVID-19 cases have been identified. So it's really a joint effort between ACPS and the Health Department to complete contact tracing within the school setting with our ultimate goal of stopping the spread of COVID-19 within our entire community. Next slide, please. So now Emily's going to talk to us a little bit more about contact tracing.
Thank you, Lauren. So Anne and Lauren talked about close contacts and the definition. So we'll talk a bit about contact tracing, which is how the school team and ACPS identify contacts. And basically, the question is, who is within six feet of a COVID-19 case for more than 15 minutes? We obviously want to know if the case was physically present at an ACPS school. So does the individual do virtual or hybrid learning? We also want to know when they were in school, where did they sit in class, or where did they sit during lunch? We've also learned to think about activities outside of the classroom area. So this is asking questions about how did the case get to school? Did they take a bus or carpool with someone else? And also if the case participated in any extra curricular activities, specifically sports. We can move on to the next slide, please. So in thinking about identifying contacts in sports, there are some unique considerations and this is because athletes are at a higher risk of spreading COVID-19. During sports, there is direct, or there can be direct physical contact that can increase transmission. There's also heavier breathing, which can increase the amount of respiratory droplets that can spread COVID-19. We also consider time spent outside of a team practice or game where there is a risk of transmission. So these are things like team huddles, water breaks, or other team social events or gatherings. The CDC does categorize sports into high, moderate, and low risk of transmission. So for example, contact tracing would be different on a baseball or softball team because during play, players are generally distanced and not having direct contact with each other. And then compare this with a sport like indoor wrestling where there is a lot of direct physical contact tracing, or physical contact. When we learn about a case on any sport team, team activities will be paused so that we can look at the team's activities and risk level. Even with safety measures in place, like masking and keeping distance during practices and games, in some circumstances, entire teams will need to quarantine for the 14 days. Next slide, please. So let's move on to what happens when your child's identified as a close contact. We want to use this time to get you to start thinking, to be prepared, and to have a plan. So let's talk about what would happen next. Next slide. You would first expect a call from the Health Department and we strongly ask you to answer the call. You and your family member are not in any type of trouble and our contact tracers are very professional and want to work with you. We also have access to language interpreters if needed. Again, our goal is to give your family information and connect you to resources during the quarantine. My colleague Christina will now tell you more about what you can expect during that phone call. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Emily. So when the Health Department is calling you to tell you that your child needs to quarantine, what exactly does that mean? Well, quarantine means that your child should stay home and keep away from other family members as much as possible, even during meals. We understand that for very young children, this may be challenging. So we suggest maybe designating only one parent or guardian to be the primary caregiver. If your child does need to enter a shared space, make sure to do so with the mask on. We recommend that people under quarantine get tested seven to 10 days after their initial exposure or as soon as possible if they come down with symptoms, since diagnostic tests work best and are most reliable close to when symptoms start. So now, what not to do? When we recommend quarantine, we would expect that your child would not go into public places. And that means really not attending school in person, not going to the grocery store, not going out to see families and friends around the neighborhood, or inviting friends over, or going to sports practices. Next slide. So we get this common question. You've been told that your child needs to quarantine for 14 days and you've seen on the news that CDC says you can shorten your quarantine to seven or 10 days. So can I shorten my child's quarantine? Well, the CDC, Virginia Department of Health, and Alexandria Health Department still recommend a full 14-day quarantine. However, if that 14 days causes an undue hardship on the family, usually meaning an insurmountable financial burden, there are options to shorten quarantine, then you can talk over with your contact tracer. Because someone can still take 14 days to show symptoms, there are added risks to our community with shortened quarantines. At this time, the Alexandria Health Department, in conjunction with other health departments around the region, such as Fairfax, Arlington, Prince William, and Loudoun, were all strongly recommending the full 14-day quarantine for schools and youth sports. And this is really because schools and youth sports activities are places where large groups of people gather regularly and just the nature of how sports activities may lead to very close contacts between individuals, either on or off the field. Next slide. So now you've gotten a letter from the school indicating that your child has been identified as a close contact and to expect a call from the Health Department. And now what happens? Well, first, as Emily said, we're asking for your partnership and answering the call. And when the Health Department gives your family a call, we talk through how your child is feeling, whether they have health conditions that can put them at increased risk for serious illness, and places where your child might have been in close contact with others and where they might have been exposed. And just to note, the Health Department will not ask about your immigration status. We don't want to know how much money you have in your bank account and we will certainly not ask for your social security number. If you have any doubt as to whether you're speaking to one of our contact tracers at the Health Department, please feel free to call our main line at 703-746-4895 to verify someone's cellphone number and credentials. Our calls to you are 100% confidential and we are required by law to protect the sensitive information discussed in these conversations. Next slide. So on this call, we're going to talk to you about best practices on what your child can do to help protect others in the community and in your household while they are under quarantine. We'll talk about what it means to quarantine and basically having your child stay home and limiting contact with others. We can answer your questions about cleaning, hand washing, and provide information on testing locations in Alexandria. Did you know that Alexandria has three free COVID-19 testing kiosks in our city where people can get tested for free seven days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.? No insurance or ID required? Next slide. So we're going to talk about, you know, testing and then we're going to talk about opting into our daily check-in system, SARA Alert. And this is an automated system that allows us to check on a large number of close contacts in a timely manner. At the end of the 14 days, the monitoring will end and so does your quarantine, provided no symptoms show up, and that's all there is to it. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, SARA Alert is our symptom monitoring system. Enrollment for your quarantine is voluntary, but it's really a service to the community. When you keep us posted as to how your child is feeling each day, our team can follow up with updated recommendations more quickly than if you didn't elect to respond. When the Health Department can identify a case of COVID-19 quickly, we can make sure that you know what to do going forward to protect your family, friends, and neighbors. Together, we can stop the spread of COVID-19 in our community. And with that, I'll pass it back to Lena.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to be going over some of the latest guidance from the CDC and VDH for K-12 schools. Next slide, please. Okay. The CDC's latest guidance for physical distancing between students in the classrooms states that in elementary schools, students should be at least three feet apart and that in middle schools and high schools, in areas of low, moderate, or substantial community transmission, students should be at least three feet apart. And in areas of high community transmission, students should be six feet apart if cohorting is not possible. In the last six weeks, Alexandria has been in both substantial and high community transmission. Cohorting or podding limits the number of students that are exposed to a specific student if there's a case in a classroom. Cohorting is generally not an option for middle schools and high schools because these students switch classrooms for different subjects throughout the day and therefore they're unable to stay in the same cohort or group. Next slide, please. The latest CDC guidance states that K-12 schools should maintain a distance of six feet in the following settings: between adults, including teachers and staff, and between adults and students, when masks cannot be worn, such as when eating, during activities when increased exhalation occurs, such as singing, shouting, band, or sports and exercise, and in common areas, such as school lobbies and auditoriums. Next slide, please. So while having desks three feet apart in the classrooms allows more students to return to in-person learning, it has significant implications for contact tracing. On this slide, on the left, we have a classroom with the desks spaced six feet apart. The red dot represents a COVID-19 case who attended class while infectious. The blue dots are other students in the classroom. Since the desks in this classroom are six feet apart, no close contacts would be identified in this classroom. On the right side, we have a classroom with the desks spaced only three feet apart. Again, the red dot represents a COVID-19 case who attended class while infectious. Since the desks in this classroom are only three feet apart, we would need to quarantine the eight students that sat within six feet of the case that was in class while infectious. Next slide, please. So what happens if a school is unable to cohort and the case attends six periods while infectious? Again, in this slide, the red dot represents our case and the blue dots are other students in the classroom. So in this situation, if the desks are six feet apart, no close contacts are identified in any of the six classrooms and no one needs to quarantine. Next slide, please. So what if the desks are only three feet apart? In this situation, if the desks are three feet apart and the student attended six periods while infectious, we would identify eight close contacts, sorry, 48 close contacts, which would be the 48 students that sat within six feet of the infectious student. And all 48 of those students would be advised to quarantine for 14 days. So as you can see, there are significant implications for schools to move the desks closer together that would result in disruption to learning and... that would result in disruption to learning and children needing, more children needing to quarantine when there's a case at school. Next slide, please. So now I'm going to touch on the updated CDC guidance on ventilation in K through 12 settings. I want to start by saying that Alexandria Health Department, myself included, we are not experts in ventilation. And our guidance to school administrators is to connect with an HVAC professional and create a plan that is tailored to their particular school or classroom. All schools and classrooms are different, and it's really important that an HVAC professional works with the school to figure out the solution that's best for their setting. The CDC's most recent recommendation recommends to bring in as much outdoor air as possible to ensure heating, ventilation, and air conditioning settings are maximizing ventilation, to filter and/or clean the air in your classroom or child in your school or classroom, to use exhaust fans in restrooms and kitchens, and to open windows in transportation vehicles. Next, one of my colleagues will be talking about Alexandria Health Department's vaccination update. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Lena. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about vaccination updates, and then how you can sign up for a vaccine if you would like to. So Alexandria is currently scheduling vaccine appointments for emergency youth authorized vaccines. At the time we made this slide, we were scheduling appointments for all three vaccines, Moderna, Pfizer, and Johnson &amp; Johnson. However, based on this week's federal guidance, Alexandria Health Department is currently pausing the use of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine as we await further information. But we are still scheduling appointments for the other two vaccines. So we recommend that everyone who has not yet, go ahead and pre-register for a vaccine appointment. You can do this on our website at alexandriaVA.gov/vaccines. And there will be a form to pre-register. And if you have any trouble with registering online, you can also call our COVID-19 hotline at 703-746-4988 for assistance with pre-registering online. After pre-registering, you will receive an email or a phone call to set up a vaccine appointment. Generally, the best vaccine for you is the one that's available. The one caveat is that if you're registering for a 16 or 17-year-old, you will need to make sure the appointments for the Pfizer vaccine. Pfizer is currently the only vaccine authorized to give to 16 and 17-year-olds. And at this time, vaccines are not yet authorized for anyone under 16. However, research is currently underway to make sure the vaccines are appropriate for a younger age group. Next slide, please. So with that, I think we'll go into some questions.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for covering the information. We have a number of very good questions in the chat. If it's okay, I would like to start off with just a couple pieces of information from the ACPS perspective. As most of you may be aware, who are participating in our town hall, we have had extensive discussion about the three feet to six feet decision, particularly when it comes to distancing between students in the classroom. And while, as covered tonight, the gold standard remains the six feet due to contact tracing and other factors, we will be moving to three feet between students and classrooms to the maximum extent possible. So that work, that those conversations have been ongoing, and that work of measuring and looking at the additional space that that will afford us in the classroom is going on. The goal that the superintendent or the date that the superintendent has shared with the board is April 26th, for the classrooms to be fitted to be three feet between students. Now, I do want to highlight, as Ms. Zimmerman said, that there are a number of scenarios that still require a six-foot distance, a minimum of six-foot distance, like lunch. And there was a question in the chat on what are the lunch plans? Those are being worked out by principals right now because every school is different. We've had several meetings this week with school administrators and talked about different options, but that given the fact that truly every school is different in layout, in size, in capacity right now, we've got different scenarios on the table for the school administrators. They are developing individual plans that then we will do together. I will give you an example, though, of one of the things that we have talked about. If you have a classroom, let's say that has 12 students in it right now, and the desks are three feet apart, one option is for our half of the class, maybe your every other row, to do, if you're at elementary level, your recess, excuse me, your recess first, and go out for 20 minutes, do your recess, and allow that opportunity. Now, the students who are, remain in the class are six foot distance, and they can have their lunch, and then the two groups can switch. In schools where there are spaces, if you're, let's say, a secondary school, and while our spaces always seems to be limited, if there is a space for half of the class to go into, then that's what we would recommend. But again, we're working that out. I know there was a comment also about, are we looking at outdoor lunch? Yes, in fact, we are. I can tell you that yesterday I was on, having this discussion with the school principals, and we do have, we just, we will have variation in that as well because some of our schools do not have well-suited outdoor space for lunch, do not have a lot of space outside. So principals are being very creative and proactive in figuring out what we can provide for your students to make sure that we have a safe opportunity for them to go to six feet during lunchtime and then come back and resume their three feet. Again, as stated, six feet should be maintained between staff members. So our adults, we want to make sure we're distancing. And the recommendation also is still six feet between a teacher or a staff member and the students in the classroom. I will take this moment just to thank all of you who are on for your support with the measures that we're taking to ensure our mitigating measures are being implemented. The daily symptom checker that our staff members and our students are using every day is making a difference. On the temperature screeners that everybody participates in, they are making difference. While they're not standalone in being able to identify if a person has COVID, I can tell you that it has helped us in cases where maybe a person didn't realize they had a temperature, and they came to school, got screened, and they had a temperature, were able to get tested, and that stopped a person who was positive with COVID from entering the school and the classroom. Same thing with the daily symptom checker, which I always emphasize for people, remember, those are new symptoms. So if you have a chronic condition, and you can answer, let's say, a sore throat that you have a chronic condition of, it's documented, that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for those new symptoms of congestion and all of the things that Ann ran through for us. But I do want to say thank you, take the opportunity to say thank you to all of you who are on here because the mitigating measures have, while I, you know, I'm sure they can be tedious every day, I was going to be receiving the texts, "Don't forget your symptom checker." They have helped us in numerous cases of identifying people who did have, end up having a positive test. So let me just peek at my notes. I think I addressed the lunch question, that those plans are forthcoming, absolutely. And we are moving. Dr. Hutchings stated, actually, in the reopening for the fall planning today, that the goal is to bring back as many students as possible over the next few weeks. And, and, you know, we want to have as many students be able to access in-person learning as we can. And so we are, we had already started before the three feet, six feet discussion. As you may be aware, if you pay attention to some of the things that are coming home or participate in the board meetings, the principals have been reaching out to families, going into their classrooms, seeing where they have spaces, and reaching out to families to make sure that even when it was just six feet, that we were using those spaces. So we have about 3,000 more students over the next two weeks who will be joining our two-day-a-week hybrid in-person learning opportunity. We have pre-K to fifth grade, starting on April 20th, some more students. And then we have, on April 27th, we have our six through 12 more students joining that hybrid setting. And then again, that's also where we get into the window of, we'll be able to assess the capacity with the additional three feet space. So I'm going to pause there. And I know there are other questions in the Q and A, and I'll see if the Health Department wants to respond to some that are more medically focused. There is a question in here, and I'm going to give my non-medical response to this. But there, there's a question about if we did have a positive case, and the individual, let's say it's a staff member, has tested positive. We follow our communication protocol, which I can outline for you, and they go home for the required 10 days. The question is, will they require a COVID test before returning? And I believe the answer is no. And I'm going to ask for our Health Department to just speak to the return requirements.
That's correct. It's not required that they test negative before returning. We recommend for a case 10 days of isolation, and that 10 days is either from symptom onset or the date of your first positive test result, if you are asymptomatic. And then for a close contact, we recommend a 14-day quarantine. And that is 14 days beginning the date that you were last exposed to COVID-19. We don't recommend testing to return to school because we know that some people can continue to test positive even though they are no longer infectious. So is that it?
There is another question about, once the vaccines are available to kids, will ACPS require proof of vaccination to attend? And that is not something that is planned right now. You know, as I'm sure you're aware, all of you, that we do have vaccination guidance outside of COVID, of what we require based on state code. And, you know, there are certainly scenarios in that, getting that health information. While we encourage people to get vaccinated, there are scenarios where vaccinations are, people are exempt due to medical reasons or more typically religious reasons, things along those lines. So let me just peek. Oh, and I know one thing I wanted to mention that came up several times yesterday, if it's okay, at the Health Department, was the question about communication and what happens if there is a positive case in your classroom. So just want to review that so everyone is clear and see if you have any questions. If we are notified about a positive case, or we have a symptomatic student, let's say, in the classroom who goes to the health annex because they're experiencing symptoms, and the school nurse reviews the child's information and sees, no, we don't have any documentation of any, you know, health condition that would cause these conditions, whatever the symptoms are. And the child goes home and does test positive. I will tell you that in most, and I can't think of a time when it hasn't happened, the families do contact us directly and notify us that they have a positive case. So we get that information sharing agreement. Same thing with staff. If the staff has been more than forthcoming about providing release of information so that we can talk directly to the Health Department without any violations of HIPAA or other confidentiality. And then we're able to dig into those questions that were covered earlier about how do we identify close contact? The principals have their seating charts with them at all times, all of the phone numbers. We know who is in a classroom when. If there's a case in a school, and some of you may have experienced this already, we do send what we call a general notification letter that will say to that school staff, as well as that school community, that there has been a case in the school. There are many times that we are not overly specific about that if it would be potentially personally identifiable to say what classroom it is in or part of the building. If there's anything we can, in fact, say, like, I know we had a situation once where we were able to say a staff member was in the building on a Monday. We wanted to include that in the letter so families knew it was a day that students weren't in school. But we provide as much information as we can. We send a general notice to the school community, and it states in bold in that letter, you will be contacted if you are a close contact. But if you are not a close contact, you don't receive information beyond that letter. So wanted to just share that with you because there were some questions yesterday about would the classroom know if someone was positive? They would know, you would know that there had been a case in your school. And in any classroom case, you know, we would go through the contact tracing process that was described. Not sure if there's another question that the Health Department wants to take a look at.
I see a question about tracing and how contact tracing is based on six feet. And the idea of moving the desks to three feet apart sounds like a discrepancy, and it asks how we plan to balance this discrepancy. And I just want to point out that the, the question really gets to the heart of the concern. We, it's, everything with this pandemic has been a careful balance of looking at, you know, the effect of children and families on, and having virtual learning, and then, you know, wanting to be able to move more children into the classroom, but also recognizing the implications for contact tracing. There's been no indication from the CDC that the six-foot requirement or portion of the definition of a close contact will be changed. So it will continue to, will continue to ask people who are within six feet of a COVID-19 case to quarantine for 14 days.
Thank you, Lena. I see a couple of questions about the playground. So if it's okay, I'll jump in and answer that. And this is a situation where we also received not just updated guidance from CDC and VDH on the distancing, but also last week on the need for disinfecting. So we did have another long discussion with our school principals, and it was shared with the town hall yesterday, as well as the principals, that the guidance we are giving for using playground equipment is that, yes, it is okay. Please watch the distancing while students are on there. And I would also just remind, and it was covered in one of our slides, but if you are exercising in some manner, it reverts back to at least six feet. And I believe the standard is actually 10. But that it's not that three feet distance if the kids are running around and playing and potentially breathing heavy at recess. So spoke at length with the elementary principals, who were excited to be able to say that even playground equipment could be used. Want to make sure, again, that the students are distancing to the extent possible, depending on what their activity is. Also, we did ask the principals to make sure that they are clear on what classes are in the playground area. And if we ever did have a case and we needed to contact trace, we would, of course, want to know who was on the playground at that time. And then the critical piece being, after you've touched the equipment and you're going back into the school, making sure that the class washing or their hands or at least using the disinfectant, if available. So that's how we would, we would respond to, yes, the playground equipment will be in use shortly if it wasn't already today. And close contacts, we would identify from recess and playground, really like we do through our other cases. We talk to the adults, we see who was there to supervise. In some cases, you know, depending on the age of the student, if it's developmentally appropriate, we'll ask, you know, who you played with while you were out, and we're able to work through the close contact process in that way. Great question about prom and graduation. There, there has been some updated information a couple of weeks ago from the governor on the ability to have live graduation, depends on the indoor/outdoor setting. We have historically used, of course, the Patriot Center with George Mason, and, and obviously, that's not an option for us this year. But we are looking at avenues so we're able to hold, I'll look for a venue that we're able to hold a live ceremony where we could be properly distanced. Of course, we would have to limit the number of family members who were able to come, but certainly want to make sure that if there's any opportunity for us to have a live graduation for our students who have been for our students who have been through so much, that is the goal. I do not believe that there are plans in the works for prom. I'm not sure how we would distance in that scenario. That takes some of the fun out of the prom. We, you can't dance six feet apart, but dancing would be a six feet apart, not a three feet, a three feet. But I, I will absolutely check with Mr. Ballas just to make sure that I didn't miss anything on that. The other thing, just to highlight when we, we talk about plans moving forward, I, I shared with you now that the goal, of course, is to bring as many students back to our in-person learning as we can. And we're continuing to look at using our prioritization matrix. How, who can we bring back and how quickly can we do that? You may have heard the plans for summer school and we do have four-day-a-week summer school planned for certain programs. So really looking forward to bringing students back. And then, you know, we are planning for five days a week in the fall. That will be interesting if we still have a three-feet guideline, but we are already in communication with the city. And again, if you like to watch some of the school board or the city council meetings, you may be aware of that, a request was submitted to the city, I believe, this week. And there's ongoing conversation about non-school-related facilities, more non-traditional facilities. If in the fall, we do see that we are, we still need a three-foot distance and we, as I said, we are planning to offer five days a week instruction. So all of that is, is moving forward at this time. And I've done a lot of talking, so I'm going to pause and see if there's, if there are other questions for the health department.
Thank you, Julie. I just want to cover quickly a couple that came in in advance. There was one question about whether or not Alexandria Health Department has reviewed the emerging research on the negative impacts of virtual school for children. So Alexandria Health Department is aware of a recent CDC study of the association of children's mode of instruction, mode of school instruction and child and parent experiences and wellbeing during the COVID-19 pandemic. That study did find that parents reported that children receiving virtual instruction had worsened mental or emotional health, decreased physical activity and time spent outside. So these are all things that, you know, we're weighing when we're looking at this CDC guidance, especially in regards to physical distancing and trying to figure out how we can get our kids back in class safely. And then there was another question about testing in schools and ADHD and ACPS are working to explore options to bring testing into schools. So hopefully there will be more on that in the future. I don't know, Julie, if you have anything that you want to add at this point.
Who's testing in schools? Okay, sorry, I was trying to, to type my response. Yes, so this is another thing where the Virginia Department of Health and the VDOE have come out with some additional guidance for us, just in the last probably 10 days or so, about two types of testing, both diagnostic in the school as well as screening testing. So we are working with the health department to see if a pilot, which is what the VDH and the VDOE are doing right now through the end of the school year, a pilot program is something that we would be able to do for a portion of both staff and students. In looking at that, we would be considering the screening portion. So having routine testing of asymptomatic individuals, a certain percentage, if we are able to move forward with this pilot. There are some logistics that we need to work out. Obviously, right now, our top priority is making the adjustments to go to three feet in the classroom and also to bring as many students back as we can. I know there are some questions in the chat about small class size and we are looking to rectify that. Excited to say that we have in the next several weeks, you know, several thousand, we have 3,000 more, or anticipating 3,000 more students returning. So the question that would be just working out some of the logistics of where would we conduct the screening testing and that process, how it's staffed? We're working through that kind of behind the scenes. Diagnostically, and again, the health department can jump in if I say anything that's wrong here, right? I described the process of right now, if we have a symptomatic student or staff member and how we utilize the health annex to make sure that they are in a place where they are safe. And also if they do, in fact, have COVID, that it's not, thank you, sorry, that, that's my New York in me coming out, talking too fast. That if we had a symptomatic student, they are sent to the health department, the health annex, to make sure that they are in a safe place. And if they were positive, that other classmates are not exposed. So if we had diagnostic testing, and again, please correct me if I'm wrong here, that would be the rapid testing, which is not as accurate as the PCR testing. And PCR testing would be a recommendation for us anyway. So we, we want to focus on the screening of the asymptomatic to see if we can limit the spread of any asymptomatic positive COVID people in the school. We have had cases where an initial report has come to us this year of a student or a staff member having a positive rapid response test that then with PCR ended up being negative. So one, if we have limited resources and space in the school, we want to make sure that it's the most efficient for us, which upon initial analysis looks like would be the screening test. But again, I'm going to pause to make sure that I didn't say anything since I am not a medical doctor.
We would, yes, that's correct. We would still recommend that PCR for confirmation after the rapid antigen test. The pilot program that VDH and VDOE are launching in schools does use the Abbott Now Rapid Antigen Test. There are other labs and community partners that might be willing to go into schools to do PCR testing. But that specific pilot program that was mentioned in one of the questions is using a rapid antigen test. So, so we would recommend doing the screening pilot. And so there was another question that I also wanted to make sure I address and asking if our recommendations to public schools are different from the recommendations we give to private schools? And they are not. We provide the same recommendations to both our public schools and our private schools. We carefully review the CDC guidance with any school that approaches us and talk about the specific caveats that are in the guidance. For example, with, you know, the three feet to six feet guidance, making sure that schools understand that children still need to be six feet apart when they're eating lunch or eating snack. And we just review the guidance with all of our schools and help them come up with the best way that they can operationalize those CDC recommendations. But we don't differ in our recommendations to our public schools or our private schools. I think that I just have a couple other slides to, to go over in conclusion. So if we could have the next slide. So just to wrap it up really quickly, the next slide, please. So the evidence shows us that our mitigation measures are working and that strict adherence to masking and physical distancing really helps us to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. And also utilizing, you know, seating charts and, and knowing schools, student schedules, staggering scheduling really assists with contact tracing and ensures that we're identifying as few close contacts as possible. We know from recent research that transmission levels in schools appears low and that more transmission is occurring in sports and extracurricular activities. Next slide, please. So with that, we're asking everyone to please help us box it in. And that means testing widely, isolating individuals who are identified to have COVID-19, identifying close contacts and asking them all to quarantine for 14 days. And next slide, please. So if you'd like to learn more about COVID-19, please visit www.alessandriav.gov/coronavirus. We've got a lot of different resources in several languages there, including three videos that you can watch and they're short videos that'll help you get up to speed on all things COVID. I think that's it. Next slide. Thank you. Thank you so much for everyone who was able to attend and thank you to ACPS for hosting us.
Absolutely. I do just want to comment that I know we've got a lot of questions and we weren't able to get through all of them. So we are saving the chat as we did yesterday. We will go through and we will post the responses and probably posted under our COVID-19 dashboard. We'll see if we can send some information out as a follow-up when the responses are posted, just so everyone does receive an answer. And I'm also just going to quickly put in the chat. And oops, that's not it. I want to list an email address for you. So my apologies that this will take one second, but we have a student services email address, which is just student services, student underscore services@acps.k12.vaa.us. And if there are any follow-up questions that you have after tonight, please feel free to email. My name is Julie Crawford. As I said at the beginning, I'm the Chief of Student Services and Equity. You can always email me directly and we will get back to all of you with your questions. We'll work together as a team with the health department and we will get those posted for you. Don't want to keep you any later than we have since we're a few minutes over, but I just want to thank everybody so much for your participation in our town hall this evening. And please let us know if you have any questions moving forward. We look forward to our continued work with all of our families, our staff and the health department in getting back to five days a week in the fall. Thank you so much.